Good evening. I would like to call the March 5, 2013 Longmont City Council meeting for order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Wouldn't miss it.
Finley.
Here.
Levinson.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening, or on final call, public invited to be heard on any items at the end of the meeting. I guess we've got minutes for last. No, no minutes, okay. Are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents, Valerie?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, we're adding an item to the consent agenda, which is a motion to designate Councilmember Bagley as acting mayor from March 9 to the 12th, and that'll be consent agenda item 9E. And the other thing is, we're adding general business item 11A, which is the private activity bond allocation for 2013. Both of those items were sent out earlier and posted and updated on the web.
Okay, thank you. CD manager, is there a report?
No comments, Mayor, council.
All right. Okay, it's time for first call, public invited to be heard. We've got Doug McKnight on the list. Please come down and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Douglas McKnight, and my address is 365 Hopi Place in Boulder. The reason I came along tonight, there were two reasons. The first is to make sure I convey what gem of a facility we have in the Sailing Club at Union Reservoir, and the second was to answer any questions that you may have about that facility we have here. In brief, it's a volunteer-run club that has been in existence for seven or eight years. We charge $50 a year for family membership. We have about 160 families involved, split between sailing and rowing, and what is quite special about Union is that there is no wake, and for the winds that we have here, we're not blessed with the strong, steady coastal winds, for the winds that we have here in the summer, which are often very light and shifty, not having the boats flopping around in the chop really helps people develop their sailing skills, and indeed, we have produced a national champion in a dinghy class and a runner-up in a different dinghy class, which is remarkable from a small piece of water in a semi-desert. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have anybody else on the list. Does anybody else like to speak at first call, public invited to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll close first call, public invited to be heard. It doesn't look like we have anything on the second reading, so it's on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, first item on consent agenda is 9A, Resolution 2013-16, adopting a debt policy for the city, setting forth objectives and defining guidelines, constraints, and responsibilities regarding fiscally prudent debt management. Item 9B is Resolution 2013-17, approving the revocable permit and agreement between the city and Union Sailing Club for sailing and rowing facilities at Union Reservoir. Item 9C is Resolution 2013-18, approving the Birch Lake Cooperative Agreements. Item 9D is Resolution 2013-19, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Flat River Power Authority, the Town Vestas Park, and the cities of Fort Collins and Loveland for the funding and coordination of a joint compensation study. Item 9E is motion to designate Councilmember Bagley as acting mayor, March 9 through March 12, 2013, and staff does not need to pull any items.
Councilmember Finley.
I found a spelling error in the, what was it, the debt policy. Does that, do I need to pull it to correct it?
I was gonna pull it anyway.
Okay, never mind.
I guess I'd like to pull 9E just for clarification, or what if.
I was gonna pull 9E for reconsideration.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to just ask a couple of questions on item A, the debt policy, please.
Okay, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move the consent agenda minus 9A and E.
Second.
All right, let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. And Jim, I would have, I didn't really have much time today or yesterday to give you a call, but I just have a couple of short, just a couple of short questions. Do you ever give us information, what I read in the presentation and the paperwork was that we have a firm debt limit for the city that's based on assessed value of the property. So do you know what our maximum debt limit is at this point?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I don't know that off the top of my head, but it only applies to general obligation debt, so it's quite a significant dollar amount, and we really don't issue any general obligation debt anymore since Tabor went in place because it would require a vote to increase the mill levy as well. So we don't, we have, in fact, I think we just paid off or about to pay off our only remaining GEO debt, so we have nothing against that debt limit practically. But it's like 64 million or something. I could get to that number. It's in our CAFR every year, though.
Okay, okay. And then in some other part, and I can't remember which part it was, talks about the Securities and Exchange, and here's a disclosure compliance section, I think it was page nine of the document, but page 12 of our electronic packet, talking about disclosure compliance with rules from the Securities and Exchange Commission. Do we also have any rules that apply from the municipal securities rulemaking board? I know that they've been continuing to update rulemaking around different transparency issues with the relationship between bond issuers and bond advisors. So why is there not any reference to MSRB?
Well, actually, we do actually abide by MSRB for our disclosure requirements. Actually, as part of that, it's not SEC requirements, but MSRB requirements, and each of our individual bond issues does have a requirement for continuing disclosure that we annually have to submit. So it's typically about a half dozen or more financial-type tables that we have to update each year on each bond issue, and we do that every September. So...
So is there a reason why we call out the Securities and Exchange Commission rule and not any of the MSRB rules?
I think we do reference disclosure in here, but we may not have...
Yeah, I did see that, but I didn't know whether or not we would look at those updated rulemakings that happened really in the last two to three years. I only ask because I get weekly emails from MSRB on the rulemakings.
And I could take a look at that as well. I think we, I know what you're referring to, and it has to do actually with the financial advisors or the underwriters that we work with, and I would almost say we rarely work with underwriters, except for the fact that I just finished reviewing a half dozen proposals for underwriters, so I can't say that anymore. But we always go to public sale on most of our issues, so we don't actually deal with underwriters. Our financial advisor does have to abide by some of those rules, though, and we do ask them when we go out to hire them to make sure that they're abiding by that. But I know you're asking whether it's in the policy. If it's not in there specifically enough, I'll try to add that in to the next update of it.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Finley.
I just want to point out a spelling error, I believe, on page 13, which is 10.3, refunding of bonds. The council may authorize by ordinance without an election issuance of refunding bonds for the purpose of paving outstanding bonds in the city. I don't think we paved them.
Well, and I will have that corrected. This is actually coming out of the city code.
Great. We've been paving those for a long time, huh?
This is on our webpage, actually, so I will pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Actually, Mayor, when I was trying to find the place Councilmember Finley was referencing, I actually found my other question. Jim, do you mind answering one more question, please? So under method of sale, it references the city charter requirement, but it says that URA bonds and annual appropriation lease obligations, including certificates of participation, are not subject to this requirement. So why would that, why would that particular classification of bonds not be subject to that sale rule?
And I could have a bond council address this as well, but I think it comes down to actually the fact that this is the city charter versus the URA being a separate entity, and so the city charter requirements do not necessarily apply to the URA. So it's, as I mentioned, we are going to hire an underwriter for our upcoming URA debt, although it will be a city debt, but it's pretty common to do that through a, not through a public sale, but instead through a private negotiation. So those type of deals are very hard to sell at public sale. It's very uncommon to do a public sale on a URA-type debt. So even if we were to go out for a public sale, more than likely, we would have to reject whatever we get and do a negotiation anyway to come up with the best deal.
And I guess that if, I have not recently reviewed bylaws for the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority to find out whether or not there's any reference to that particular situation, you know, in the LORA bylaws, for example.
It's probably state statutes is what we probably check with.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Jim.
Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move Resolution 2013-16.
All right, let's vote.
That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. And Jim, I would have, I didn't really have much time today or yesterday to give you a call, but I just have a couple of short, just a couple of short questions. Do you ever give us information, what I read in the presentation and the paperwork was that we have a firm debt limit for the city that's based on assessed value of the property. So do you know what our maximum debt limit is at this point?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I don't know that off the top of my head, but it only applies to general obligation debt, so it's quite a significant dollar amount, and we really don't issue any general obligation debt anymore since Tabor went in place because it would require a vote to increase the mill levy as well. So we don't, we have, in fact, I think we just paid off or about to pay off our only remaining GEO debt, so we have nothing against that debt limit practically. But it's like 64 million or something. I could get to that number. It's in our CAFR every year, though.
Okay, okay. And then in some other part, and I can't remember which part it was, talks about the Securities and Exchange, and here's a disclosure compliance section, I think it was page nine of the document, but page 12 of our electronic packet, talking about disclosure compliance with rules from the Securities and Exchange Commission. Do we also have any rules that apply from the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board? I know that they've been continuing to update rulemaking around different transparency issues with the relationship between bond issuers and bond advisors. So why is there not any reference to MSRB?
Well, actually, we do actually abide by MSRB for our disclosure requirements. Actually, as part of that, it's not SEC requirements, but MSRB requirements, and each of our individual bond issues does have a requirement for continuing disclosure that we annually have to submit. So it's typically about a half dozen or more financial-type tables that we have to update each year on each bond issue, and we do that every September. So...
So is there a reason why we call out the Securities and Exchange Commission rule and not any of the MSRB rules?
I think we do reference disclosure in here, but we may not have...
Yeah, I did see that, but I didn't know whether or not we would look at those updated rulemakings that happened really in the last two to three years. I only ask because I get weekly emails from MSRB on the rulemakings.
And I could take a look at that as well. I think we, I know what you're referring to, and it has to do actually with the financial advisors or the underwriters that we work with, and I would almost say we rarely work with underwriters, except for the fact that I just finished reviewing a half dozen proposals for underwriters, so I can't say that anymore. But we always go to public sale on most of our issues, so we don't actually deal with underwriters. Our financial advisor does have to abide by some of those rules, though, and we do ask them when we go out to hire them to make sure that they're abiding by that. But I know you're asking whether it's in the policy. If it's not in there specifically enough, I'll try to add that in to the next update of it.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Finley.
I just want to point out a spelling error, I believe, on page 13, which is 10.3, refunding of bonds. The council may authorize by ordinance without an election issuance of refunding bonds for the purpose of paving outstanding bonds in the city. I don't think we paved them.
Well, and I will have that corrected. This is actually coming out of the city code.
Great. We've been paving those for a long time, huh?
This is on our webpage, actually, so I will pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Actually, Mayor, when I was trying to find the place Councilmember Finley was referencing, I actually found my other question. Jim, do you mind answering one more question, please? So under method of sale, it references the city charter requirement, but it says that URA bonds and annual appropriation lease obligations, including certificates of participation, are not subject to this requirement. So why would that, why would that particular classification of bonds not be subject to that sale rule?
And I could have a bond council address this as well, but I think it comes down to actually the fact that this is the city charter versus the URA being a separate entity, and so the city charter requirements do not necessarily apply to the URA. So it's, as I mentioned, we are, we are going to hire an underwriter for our upcoming URA debt, although it will be a city debt, but it's pretty common to do that through a, not through a public sale, but instead through a private negotiation. So those type of deals are very hard to sell at public sale. It's very uncommon to do a public sale on a URA-type debt. So even if we were to go out for a public sale, more than likely, we would have to reject whatever we get and do a negotiation anyway to come up with the best deal.
And I guess that if, I have not recently reviewed bylaws for the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority to find out whether or not there's any reference to that particular situation, you know, in the LORA bylaws, for example.
It's probably state statutes is what we probably check with.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Jim.
Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move Resolution 2013-16.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. I pulled the last one, E, which is Resolution, I guess, R 2013-20. The reason why I pulled it is there's a chance that I may not be going out of town. I've got a very sick dog who's getting better fast, but if it's, she's not able to go up and down the back stairs by Thursday morning, I'm going to cancel my trip because it's just too big of a dog for my wife to take in and out of the house, and I just don't feel comfortable for being gone. So I know how excited Brian was to be the mayor, and I would totally, totally trust him to run this city. He would have the citizens and everybody's best interest in mind. But, so I'd still like to pass this resolution with the caveat that maybe it's understood that if I do stay, then Brian's not the mayor.
I'd say that.
Councilmember Whit.
I was just gonna say, you do what you need to do, Mayor. We support you. And quite frankly, who knows what we come back to? I don't know. I hear something about a chicken wing proclamation and whatnot, so whatever you need to do, and don't take chances with your pets, Hal.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to point out, should I become acting mayor? We haven't discussed benefits. We have not discussed pay.
You know, and I could have a bond counsel address this as well, but I think it comes down to actually the fact that this is the city charter versus the URA being a separate entity. And so the city requirement, the city charter requirements do not necessarily apply to the URA. So it's, and as I mentioned, we are, we are going to hire an underwriter for our upcoming URA debt, although it will be a city debt, but it's pretty common to do that through a, not through a public sale, but instead through a private negotiation. So those type of deals are very hard to sell at public sale. It's very uncommon to do a public sale on a URA-type debt. So even if we were to go out for a public sale, more than likely, we would have to reject whatever we get and do a negotiation anyway to come up with the best deal.
And I guess that if, I have not recently reviewed bylaws for the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority to find out whether or not there's any reference to that particular situation, you know, in the Lura bylaws, for example.
It's probably state statutes is what we probably check with.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Jim.
Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move Resolution 2013-16.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. I pulled the last one, E, which is Resolution, I guess, R 2013-20. The reason why I pulled it is there's a chance that I may not be going out of town. I've got a very sick dog who's getting better fast, but if it's, she's not able to go up and down the back stairs by Thursday morning, I'm gonna cancel my trip because it's just too big of a dog for my wife to take in and out of the house, and I just don't feel comfortable for being gone. So I know how excited Brian was to be the mayor, and I would totally, totally trust him to run this city. He would have the citizens and everybody's best interest in mind. But, so I'd still like to pass this resolution with the caveat that maybe it's understood that if I do stay, then Brian's not the mayor.
I'd say that.
Councilmember Whit.
And I was just gonna say, you do what you need to do, Mayor. We support you. And quite frankly, who knows what we come back to? I don't know. I hear something about a chicken wing proclamation and whatnot, so whatever you need to do, and don't take chances with your pet's health.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to point out, should I become acting mayor? We haven't discussed benefits. We have not discussed pay, pro-rata increase, you know, should be more than appropriate. You know, I want a personal gavel with my name, and all you can eat chicken wings for four days. That's all I ask. No, if you stay mayor, I will acquiesce and bow to your authority and promise no coup d'etat, whether you are present or not present shall occur.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. All right, shall we go ahead and have a motion on this? Okay, I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution... Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, let's vote. Okay. It passed five to two with...
I appreciate the confidence. A unanimous vote, Mr. Roche. Eventually.
All right. I guess there's no general business man.
Yes, there is a general, we added one.
Okay.
It's general business, item 11A, is City of Longmont 2013 Private Activity Bond Allocation Procedures and Guideline.
Oh, that's right.
And I assume there's a short staff presentation on this from Jim?
David Starnes.
David Starnes, sorry.
And Kathy. Mayor, council, the reason we put this on is it was on as an information item in last week's packet, and there were a couple of questions. And then going over the information, we realized that this is actually a new topic for some of you all because of, it hasn't been brought up since you've been on council, and we felt like it would be a good idea to provide an overview of this information. And at the same time, looking at future agendas, we felt that this was probably gonna be the most opportune time to provide this information, so we went ahead and added it.
Good evening again. David Starnes, Economic Development. Mayor, members of council, I hope you'll indulge me for a few minutes here. I have a brief presentation on private activity bonds and this somewhat unique tool that the city can provide in terms of facilitating economic development and housing opportunities in our city. So I have a brief primer on what are PABs, purposes of the program, history of the PAB uses in Longmont, as well as our process that we have in place now, and the evaluation criteria for evaluating applications for PAB, or PAB allocation should we receive more than one. So essentially, our private activity bonds are something established from the federal government. They are bonding authority granted by the feds to the state under the Tax Reform Act of 1986. Basically, their taxes and bonds are exempt from federal income taxes for privately developed projects. These include housing, economic development, manufacturing, infrastructure, and environmental projects. PABs offer low-cost financing, usually two to three percent points below what conventional financing offers. So it's an incentive for private developers or businesses to take advantage of this tool for a lower cost. The purpose that's established through the Tax Reform Act are to establish an orderly and equitable process for allocating PABs to meet federal requirements. Essentially, the state of Colorado receives an allocation. Fifty percent of the allocation goes to the state authorities, the Colorado Housing and Finance, and other state entities, and the remaining fifty percent is distributed to cities and counties throughout the state of Colorado based on their population of pro-rata share. So Longmont's PAB allocation this year is approximately $4 million. Other purposes are to encourage private sector investment, to encourage development in areas of the state and cities where housing, higher education, jobs, and certain infrastructure requirements are needed most. Because these are privately developed projects, they help increase and maintain the local tax base, and then also to maximize the use of the state's taxes and PAB allocation are the main project purposes. So in terms of uses, I guess there's kind of two main categories. One is housing, and these are primarily low-to-moderate-income housing projects. These include, the allocation of 4 million can be used towards new construction and acquisition of land and rehabilitation of existing housing projects. Also for single-family uses, for mortgages, what's called mortgage credit certificates, as well as qualified energy-efficient home improvements. The other main category is related to economic development, and this includes industrial development bonds for manufacturing uses. And these are uses for companies that assemble, fabricate, and manufacture a project, a process, a product for resale that changes in the personal use of that property. And the funds can be used for land acquisition and new construction, as well as the acquisition of machinery and equipment for that business. Other uses in terms of PABs are what's called qualified 501(c)(3) bonds, and these are nonprofit hospitals and private universities for their construction. In addition, qualified redevelopment bonds qualify as a PAB usage. And this includes land acquisition and site appropriation in blighted areas, typically urban renewal areas, as well as exempt facility bonds to finance critical community needs. And these include hazardous waste facilities, solid waste disposal facilities, water and sewer, energy, gas, and power facilities. One thing that we are exploring is whether or not PABs can be used for broadband connection in our city to help, you know, businesses who want to access our broadband network to do that. There's something that we're discussing this with the Department of Local Affairs to see this as a potential eligible use. So the history of PABs in Longmont. The city, we cannot formally issue PAB bonds because of the Home Rule Charter that prevents us, that would require a vote of the people for us to do projects of this nature. So we basically induce the bonds to another state or local agency. This includes Boulder County, can be the Colorado Housing and Finance Agency, or the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. So for the past several years, due to poor market conditions, there really wasn't a market for the allocation that we received. And what we typically done is send it back to statewide balance, where other entities or other businesses can apply for those funds through the state agencies. So as I mentioned, in 2013, our allocation is approximately $4.1 million. Since 1990, we've had a total of about $100 million in PAB allocation, either through our allocation through the city or through the state, applied to projects here in Longmont. As you can see, about two-thirds of that was through the Colorado Housing and Finance projects. You see the $40 million for health, I believe that was related back to Longmont United Hospital back in the early 1990s, they used the PAB. In terms of Longmont-funded projects, our allocation has been primarily through housing. And there's a whole list here on the next page of kind of some selected examples of where we use PABs historically. And these include Boulder County for Energy Improvement Funds, Blue Vista Housing, the Metro Mayor's Caucus, the Rehab of Village Place, Mountain View Meadow Apartments, East Glen Apartments, and Thistle Community Housing. And these are examples primarily of housing projects that have taken advantage of the PAB allocation that we've had. So the reason why we're here tonight, too, is to kind of update you on the process. You know, now that the market conditions are more favorable, you know, we don't know what kind of opportunity may be from businesses or developers to apply for allocations. So we have a process in place that we wanted to kind of show you in terms of what we do in terms of advertising to the community, should we receive more than one application, how we go about reviewing the applications, and evaluating how we take advantage of this, the allocation that we have, and essentially rank and score the different applicants for how we should use our funds. So there's, I think, an ad in the paper yesterday, hopefully, that put, that essentially notified that the PABs, our allocation is open. We have an application deadline of May 8. And then through the summer, you know, should we get more than one application, we will, you know, review the applications, prepare a summary report for city council, and we will present our preliminary rankings based on a score sheet to city council, and city council will evaluate the options and provide a recommendation for approval of the request for PAB. You know, you can choose to award all 4 million to one group. If there's more than one, you can split it out. There's a wide variety, wide variety of ways to award the PAB allocation. Then in August, the city will provide a resolution of endorsement, and we will forward that to the inducement entity. This could be Boulder County, or CHAFRA, or DOLA, in terms of, that would be the entity that would issue the bonds. And then that would happen probably in September. So when we, when I looked at this process, you know, the last time that we had basically the scoring system in place was developed back in 1999. And the criteria was very much geared essentially towards housing. The criteria kind of provided bonus points for, you know, housing projects to provide certain, you know, income ranges above what the average would be. And so what we wanted to do was really kind of create a level playing field for economic development, since economic development opportunities are eligible to take advantage of PABs. And by doing so, we provided bonus points kind of on a similar scale to housing projects. And these, you know, these include manufacturers that provide wage rates that are above a certain percent of the average, you know, median wage in Boulder County. And this is something to kind of keep things equal, should there be more than one application. And so really, the criteria served a way as city council for you to evaluate options and to provide recommendations for approval, should there be more than one application So with that, I will open up a question. I know in your package, you received kind of the guidelines, as well as the original 1999 criteria score sheet, and the updated 2013 criteria score sheet. Kathy Fedler from Housing and the Community Investment Division is also here to answer questions as well, so we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So my, a couple of quick questions. How often does the, is it always 4.1, and does it come up every year? Is it, how long does that last?
So, yeah, we get an allocation every year, and it, you know, depends on population. So, you know, maybe last year, I don't know exactly what the number was, you know, it might have been 4 million. You know, a couple of years before, it could have been 3.9 million. So as the increase in population, you know, our allocation gets greater. And so this year, it's approximately 4.1.
And then how, why is this coming up now? Was there, who on staff said, hey, I got an idea? And what was the impetus for them going, I think we should bring this to council?
Well, I think what we wanted to do, we, so when we realized that kind of the market was coming back, and we heard there might be some interest in PAB, people responding to the PABs, we wanted to kind of revisit the policies and procedures, and also revisit kind of the score sheet. And in discussions with Kathy, we realized, you know, some of the, the score sheet hasn't been updated, you know, for almost 13 years. And honestly, we didn't think it was equal in terms of, you know, they're providing bonus points for housing, but not for economic development. So should there be an application that comes in for a housing project, it wouldn't be on equal footing compared to another application potentially that had economic development. So we wanted to kind of create a, again, a level playing field, and so it was presented to you as an info item last week, just to kind of provide a refresher for you, because, you know, it's been a couple of years since, you've probably seen this, and you probably weren't on council, and so it was more kind of the kind of, counsel up to speed on this tool, that we expect, I think, this year to have certainly more, one application definitely, or more.
So someone, for example, who could argue that the city's been overly generous to certain developers, could take advantage of the PAB process in order to level that playing field? Is that what you're saying?
Sure, I mean, I mean, it's a tool, yeah, it's a tool that any developer can use, a developer for housing, a business that wants to manufacture a certain part, they can take advantage of this tool that essentially offers, you know, lower-cost financing. And let me say, from an economic development, the bond issue, you know, amounts usually are between 3 and 10 million. The 10 million is the capital they can do. And so businesses, if they have 4 million from us, they can apply from the statewide balance for more than that, you know, to make it a $10 million project. So, you know, DOLA and CHAFRA have their own application process for that as well.
And then last question...
So can I jump in and provide another answer? Part of it, too, is when we provided the information, when we provided the information in the packet, Councilmember Lewison had a question on this, and then as we began discussing it, we also realized that it would be new to you, Mayor Coombs, and Councilmember Finley, because we haven't dealt with this while you've been on council. And before we got too far down the road, we felt that this is a really good opportunity to bring it up, let you ask any questions, because what we didn't want to do is get involved in the process, and then we have a lot of questions, and it's too late to really make any adjustments, and council deemed that from a policy perspective.
Especially from the banking, the criteria, if you had questions about why things, why things change, it's good to do that now, before the applications are received and we start reviewing it. And so that's why we wanted to...
And thank you, before I hit the button and turn it off, thank you, and thank you. And my last question is simply, when was the last time we used this? Just a specific example, dollar figures, how it worked, and then why we stopped? That's it.
So according to my sheet here, the last time it was used was 2008. And so that was for Boulder County, the bonds for energy improvements, about for 3.5 million. Mountain View Plaza and Parkside Apartments, the housing project, they used it, but they used it through the state PAB issued by CHAFRA, and that was just a couple hundred thousand. So basically, 2008, the market, well, there just wasn't any, yeah, we had no interest.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So last year, did we advertise that we had this money? How did we know there was no interest?
We, that's a good question. I think, you know, we, I don't believe we put it in the paper. Let me just say that. So I don't think there was any formal process where it was modified. Yeah, yeah.
And I'm glad that we have brought it back, and we're doing it this year. That's a good thing. So a local developer could use this to build apartments, for example?
Yes, within certain income ranges, lower to moderate income housing.
Right. Could the Our Center use it and apply it to their capital construction of their new building?
I don't know. I guess, you know, in terms of like exempt facility bonds, you know, these are usually tied to what they define, what the state defines as critical community needs, solid waste disposal, hazardous waste, energy. I don't recall in terms of, but the Our Center is...
It serves the needy.
The needy. And does it do housing?
No, it would not.
Yeah.
I mean, they do provide housing through some things, but I'm thinking in particular of their building that they're going to renovate.
Ask Kathy, what she thinks. That's her area.
I bet Kathy would know.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kathy Fedler. I don't know the answer for sure. My guess is that it is not. The only thing I have ever seen on 501(c)(3) are the two that were listed on the slide, which was hospitals and universities. But we can definitely check into that.
I think that would be great, a great thing for somebody to check into. So since the Twin Peak Mall is in renewal, urban renewal district, would it be eligible?
I guess potentially, yes.
And would the remediation of a site like the Sugar Mill be eligible?
If it, yes, it's in the Southeast Urban Area, so potentially, yes. Or if there's a business that wanted to occupy that or redevelop that particular building to manufacture a particular product.
That'd be real good. Just a few ideas for people out there.
Councilmember Whit.
And I was talking to Councilmember Finley about the Sugar Mill, and since it mentioned hazardous materials, now, these bonds have to go to a, another entity, a non-governmental entity, is how I understand it, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah, the recipient of the bond proceeds had to be a privately, private entity.
So we couldn't, like, give it to Boulder County, because that Sugar Mill was in Boulder County? Okay.
Maybe the inducement entity to give it to somebody else.
Gotcha. Okay, just checking. Thanks.
Councilmember Lewison.
So I guess Councilmember Bagley and I were having a little side conversation, because last week, I thought I asked you if it could be used for the Twin Peak Mall, and I thought you said no, one way I asked you that, because that's what I sort of was thinking when I read that on the criteria, so, and I thought you said no. Anyway... Anyway, one, one thing that I, I think we need to look at is if you're, um, reviewing 14, the other factors, we have a gap in talking about between B and C, the majority of rental units affordable, it says 31 to 40%, and then the next category jumps to 60 to 70% AMI. So if you're not eligible, according to this, you're not going to get a score if you're between 41 to 59% of AMI. So we need to have that extra category in there, don't we? Yep. Okay. And then, um, I was also looking at, um, one of the, uh, other criterias, it talks about, um, owner, affordable housing, um, affordable to 60, oh, I guess I'm confusing things under B and C. So it's only, for the rental housing units affordable, it only goes between 31 and 41. And then for the owner units affordable, it says 60 to 70. But it looks like we had another criteria that it's, um, it says, um, on the footnote below, for owner units affordable to families at or below 80% AMI by family size. And yet, this has a cap of 70%. So is there a discrepancy in that cap there? And I understand, and so we're not going to be, um, looking, I guess the other, the other part for the, uh, the renter units is at, at or below 50% of AMI. So can you explain, you know, those dynamics there?
So those are bonus points.
Okay.
To encourage, um, getting to lower income families. So there does not need to be, uh, the gap is, um, because it's bonus points, there doesn't need to be a specific category for 41 to whatever you said.
Yeah, 59%.
Right. Because these two are bonus. So they're covered, um, regular, um, below 80% AMI for owner units and below 50% AMI for rental units are covered up above under regular points. These are just bonus to try and encourage folks to do, to get to lower income households.
Okay. And then one other thing that I, I really suggest that we look at splitting out, because it could be an advantage in the Southeast Urban Renewal Area, is under, under 11, that it says located in downtown development area slash urban renewal area, there could possibly be a project that comes along where the LDDA border ends and the Southeast Urban Renewal Area starts. And so if you have a project that straddles both, it should be able to score points separately for the, um, urban renewal and it should be able to score points because you get, you know, double plus good bonus points that way. And it'll make a project where we really want to incent, um, some activity, economic activity and building to go on. We know also that, um, affordable housing in that area would also be a critical factor for transit, um, a transit oriented development, um, project. And so, um, I would suggest that, um, we may want to split it out and, and make it a, um, 11 is downtown development area and then make another bonus category for urban renewal area and, um, either give them each 20 points or, or do 15 and 15. I'm just throwing that out there because I'm looking at future projects. Would you agree that it would be, it would be good to be able to give something, score points when it might sit in two geographic areas?
There is, you know, a portion where the DDA and the Southeast do overlap. So there is properties that share both DDA and Southeast Urban Renewal Designations.
Yeah, but there could be the one property that sits on the, the border where part of it's in DDA and part of it's in, the, the other part is purely in Southeast Urban Renewal Area. And so you should be able to, you know, allocate your bonus points because it really will count for two different areas of the city. So that's what, that I, I would look at. And I guess the, the assumption with the primary jobs built in, it's not a footnote in this, but, um, should we have a footnote that the primary jobs would be X number, you know, percentage wise, higher than average wage in Boulder County? Cause the, the chart doesn't indicate that. But I think that, um, my hand doesn't say, the old chart doesn't do that either. But I think I, I read something. I thought I read something in the presentation that said.
Yeah, the new chart says for the bonus points for commercial slash industrial, that five, 10, or 20% above the average wage for Boulder County. It's number 14.
But in general, those are just bonus points. So would we want to still, um, would it be per, would it be per job or in the category of, say, for example, they're creating 10 primary jobs, they'd get 10 points for that? And they would get a full 10 points if all those jobs were 5% above or just the proportion of the jobs?
It's the, it's the average wage. Essentially in the application, we ask them to break out administrative, professional, technical and executive and, you know, three jobs at that wage, four at this. And so you average that. And so it's kind of the weighted average. And so the weighted average, if that weighted average is 5% or 10% or 15, that's how we determine the, uh, application of that criteria.
Okay. And then what would be the number 12, project meets under other LACP, Longline Area Comprehensive Plan Strategies? What kind of, um, bonus points would that be awarded for?
I think that was written back in 1999 to, I think, I'm, I'm only speculating here, but, you know, two specific projects that are unique in nature that, that meet goals and that aren't really outlined in there that are, you know, unique to the, to the city. So I think it's essentially undefined, because they could, could do a part of a lot of different things. But I certainly would, you know, welcome suggestions in how we could refine that. But at this point, it was, I think, again, I don't know exactly, maybe Kathy can, can weigh in.
I'm just trying to imagine what strategies from the LACP could be used. There, there's so many that are pretty, um, uh, open-ended.
So it could be a project that, um, ties in with the Greenway, provides transportation as part of their housing, um, ties in with the multimodal transportation stuff, bikeways, anything that would be in the LACP that is a benefit, um, could be considered under that criteria, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I guess there's no further questions for you.
Thank you very much.
I guess it's time now for final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anyone out, would like to address the, the council at this point? I guess seeing no one, I'll close. Public invited to be heard. Final call. Um, it's time now for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a pleasure going to the employee luncheon today and hearing all the wonderful stories about employees that have went, in some instances, above and beyond the call of duty, whether it was a life-saving, several life-saving, um, um, hieroics, whether it was at the airport or at Union Reservoir, or in another instance where two employees, uh, pulled a, um, uh, driver out of a car that ran into a, a truck and burst in, a tanker truck that burst into flames. So congratulations to those employees and those others employees that, uh, made a difference in the organization. So congratulations to them. On a bit of a sad note, um, I received an email from Sue Bolton today. Uh, um, the Longmont Sister Cities on the Chino side, um, are the longtime, um, counterpart, Yoriko Kasai has been diagnosed with colon cancer. And she will be, uh, undergoing, uh, surgery in Tokyo on March 5th. So hopefully, um, from the city of Longmont, uh, we, I would hope that we would wish her a speedy recovery on her, um, on her surgery and her recovery from cancer. So, um, speedy recovery, Yoriko.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. All I have this evening is, uh, Business of the Week. We have a new restaurant in town, Joe's Restaurant at 526 Main Street. I haven't been there yet, but I have it on good authority that it's quite tasty and we should all go try it.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, and I have been at Joe's Friday night and, um, uh, uncharacteristically, they had liver and onions on the menu, which I did not eat, a family member did and, and said it was excellent and it looked very well-prepared. And, uh, everything else was delicious as well. I would also like to commend the Chamber of Commerce on a great event last Thursday, unity in the community. It was great that they welcomed everybody in there and, um, there was a lot of unity going around, a lot of people mixing it up and, um, an opportunity for nonprofits and other organizations to do good work in our community to have an opportunity to have several hundred people walk by and talk to them. And it was a pleasure to see all the displays and, and meet up with people. I would also, um, like to commend those employees that, um, Councilmember Santos acknowledged, um, it was a great event, um, to go to today for the luncheon. The other thing I'd like to mention, I saw a bit in the paper that Bill Powell, a former employee of, uh, City of Longmont, is now the new deputy city clerk in Colorado Springs. So, um, I think Colorado Springs probably got somebody very, very good and, um, we'll miss him. I remember Bill, um, a lot of presentations at the podium for us and appreciated his professionalism and, and, uh, great knowledge and, and ability to explain things. So I think that that'll serve him in good stead in his new position. I want to wish everybody safe travels to DC and hopefully we'll be able to connect up and maybe have lunch or dinner some night if we're, um, able to. And, um, I'm sure Councilmember Bagley will keep the home fires burning here. Just don't burn down the city.
All right, um, I would like to congratulate Eltona Middle School. They put on a really wonderful play last weekend, uh, Once Upon a Mattress. And, uh, the, the four teachers there were much, were just absolutely incredible. The costumes were incredible, the music, the choreography. Uh, I mean, it was better than a lot of college-level plays that I've seen. So congratulations to the St. Brain School District and those kids that worked so hard. It was just an amazing thing to see and I was just really proud to be a mayor of such quality kids and quality parents, uh, that worked so hard to put on such a quality product. Um, the other thing I'd like to reemphasize how important that resolution for, um, all the power companies of the four cities in Platte River to work together. Uh, you know, it's kind of a strange industry now where not that many people are coming out with power degrees. It wasn't the hot, uh, an up-and-coming field in electrical engineering and yet the demand is huge. So we just don't want to be caught kind of with our pants down and not knowing what the industry's been paying out there. So I think it's a really good move to, to work collaboratively together to find out what are the ranges of these really skilled positions that are so valuable. Um, also, you know, you know, to kind of reflect back over a year and, and where particularly the last couple of months, it seems like the entire council are working together as a team. We cover for each other, um, you know, even if we disagree on some issues, we work very collaboratively. I, I just think that the teamwork and the civility, um, that we've established, you know, over the last three or four months is just outstanding. I'm enjoying working with each and all of you, so I'd like to say thank you for that. Um, anyway, I guess I'll end there. Any other comments? All right. City manager, any comments?
Actually do have a couple of write-ifs, um, at this point. Um, one, the city of Boulder contacted us to see if we would be interesting, interested in having a joint meeting with them. And so I wanted to throw that out to council to see if you're interested. Um, and if, if so, we would definitely proceed with, um, trying to get that scheduled.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Are there any topics that you all would like to discuss or do you want to get that to us via email?
Councilmember Whit.
Um, might I ask who initiated the, the meeting? That might give us some indication of what they want to talk about.
Um, it was, um, their deputy city clerk, who actually used to be an employee here, Alicia Darrow.
Okay.
Contacted us, but we have, we have not had any indication in terms of what they want to talk about.
You know, something that we probably should discuss is, uh, yes, what, what does the city of Boulder, what are they hoping for, um, with, uh, fast tracks? That might be a topic of discussion. Um, also, uh, we might want to discuss other transit things, i.e. the EcoPass discussion that we had. And then, um, maybe we could talk about some economic development, um, issues, specifically, perhaps putting some pressure on Boulder County to offer some incentives. Might be something. I, maybe that's not something that Boulder's interested in, but if we could have some help on that, that might be good.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd be interested, you know, interested in some of those topics as well. I'd also be interested in talking about potential, um, topics regarding Boulder County. I also would be interested in talking with Lyons and any other, uh, cities within Boulder County, um, whether it's economic development or housing human service issues that they are having. Um, you know, cause we're having some issues ourselves with, um, you know, homelessness and things of that nature, economic development, where, you know, we had our, our meeting with Louisville regarding economic development, you know, with urban renewal and things of that nature. And so if there's things that we can help them with, I know we help, have helped Lyons in the past with some of their water treatment issues and things of that nature. If there are things that we can reach out to our, the other communities, um, you know, potentially have a meeting with, uh, a board, uh, a meeting with Erie, that might be good as well. So to see if there's anything that we can potentially help those other communities or ideas, you know, swapping of ideas would be, would be good.
Okay. Anything else, Harold?
Um, I have one more item. I know last week we discussed the appointment of a couple of council members to the north, um, northwest.
Mobility study.
Yeah.
NAMs.
NAMs, NAMs. Um, and so talked to Phil and we were going to place that on the, the next council agenda. Um, but if there isn't an interesting council, we, we can get that information from you all today in terms of who would like to serve on that and we can forward that on to them. It's really up to council's discretion in terms of who would like to do that. Currently, I know.
I'll volunteer if, if the other people would support me. Councilmember Bagley.
Uh, on Friday. I'll, I'll get you a list of, of who I decide will do that. Exactly.
So apparently now they're saying they want one rep. Brad just informed me and initially the question was two reps, so now they want one rep. Um, definitely, maybe give us a couple of names and that way we can.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm absolutely fine. Yes, Katie would like to be that rep. She's, uh, pretty much up to speed on all the RTD and transportation issues, uh, but I'm also fine with doing it too. So.
I was going to offer to be an alternative if there were two reps and then somebody couldn't go or they, there was a big meeting. I know that, uh, in the past, uh, Councilmember Whit has notified me of a, a meeting or two down at Dr. Cog where she thought she needed an extra person in the room and, and, uh, I went down. So I'd be willing to be, um, serving as the second person or as an alternate to, you know, one or two. Depends, I mean, I don't even know what day the meetings, have they established what the meeting day or time is?
I don't think we know that yet, no.
Okay. And I guess that would be sort of important information.
Can we assign maybe a primary and then an alternate? Cause it's kind of nice to have a backup if something can't happen because of conflicts or whatnot, is it? Or do they just want one designated person, period?
Well, and it may be that we just need to bring it back at the next meeting to clarify some of these issues. So I think we can get a sense as to who's interested and then let us have some discussions. Then we can probably bring that back.
All right. Councilmember Whit.
And I, I would love to do it. Um, it fits in with many of the other boards that I, I serve on. Many of the people that I work with on Dr. Cog are on it and, um, also the, uh, Northern Area Transportation Alliance and the US 287 corridor group. And so I think either, either the mayor or myself would probably be best. Um, Mayor, you, you are the top dog, so you get to decide if you want to do it.
I would, I would actually prefer that Katie does it, cause I have a lot of things on my plate, but I would be glad to be the alternate when she can't do it. I would fill in for her. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. You know, and Mayor, that's what I... Thank you, you know, and Mayor, that's what, either one of you would be fine. You both handle the majority of the transportation issues. So I'm comfortable with either one of you taking, you know, Councilmember Witt would be fine as the lead. Fine, if you want to be the alternate mayor, great. As long as one or the two of you can make those meetings and have that nice cohesion, great. As long as they know that Longmont is there and, you know, we have a nice, as you said a couple of weeks ago, a seat at the table, that's fine.
Okay, I think we probably have enough information. Thank you.
No more comments.
All right, the city attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.